Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. It's on a slightly different Monday, being the third Monday. I do want to ask, is there anybody here from Celebration Church that came to say, "There he is, right there, awesome"? If you'll all please rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
On behalf of Celebration Church, I'd just like to thank everybody. Thank you, guys, for having us. And I want to share something with you guys that I got from Google, the omniscient Google. Whenever I looked up community about a couple of months ago, it said, "A feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common interests, attitudes, and goals." Y'all bow your heads with me. Lord, I pray that this fellowship that we have in the community of Fairhope, our connectedness with one another, those here in this room, those out in the community, Lord, that it would be strengthened through our common attitudes. I know that in this room, to have common attitudes can sound like a crazy idea to some people, God, as they look to their left and to their right, seeing people that have radically different views than them. But, Lord, right now, in this moment, we are all connected in one common attitude, in an attitude of prayer, in a posture of humbleness and submission to the living God of the universe. Lord, I pray that you would strengthen this community, strengthen our fellowship and common interests, that we would all have an interest in one another, that we would have an interest in the people who are most overlooked, the disabled, an interest in the business owners, an interest in the retirees, the veterans that we have in this community, Lord, that we would simply take an interest in the well-being and the welfare of our neighbors. Lord, I pray that we would be strengthened by our common goals, by the advancement and the prosperity of this community. Lord, that whenever Fairhope prospers, your kingdom prospers. Because I know that our prosperity relies on your kingdom principles, because your kingdom was built to last. It has withstood the test of time by empowering those who live and submit to your lordship. I pray that this can be the type of city that empowers those who live in it, to make a difference, to have a voice, and to strive for a better tomorrow. The Apostle Paul of Ephesians said this, "God can do anything, far more than you could ever guess or request in your wildest dreams. He does it not by pushing us around, but by working within us, His Spirit deeply and gently within us." So I pray that that same Spirit that lived inside of Jesus, whenever He walked this earth, ordering His steps, that it be the same Spirit to lead us, to order our steps, that each and every one of us are filled with the Spirit of love, the same Spirit that gives grace, the same Spirit that, tonight, Lord, more than any other night in this room, offers a Spirit of wisdom and a Spirit of unity, so that we can accomplish goals that you have planned for this community. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Very well said.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, council, first item of business tonight is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were had on December the 11th. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to these minutes, council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt those minutes as submitted.
Submissed.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, the minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. The City of Lakeland, Florida, sent a proclamation to Fairhope for our assistance with the September 10th Hurricane Irma storm relief efforts. The City of Lakeland wants to recognize the City of Fairhope and its employees, and they're here tonight. I'm going to give you all these thank-you notes from kids that are absolutely precious and T-shirts. Doug Brown, Ian Morrison, Marshall King, and Chaz McManahan, I'm sure I just killed that last name. There were over forty municipalities that assisted in the relief effort. Lakeland knows that this large-scale effort is only possible with the assistance of their municipal neighbors and proclaimed October 2nd as the Mutual Aid Appreciation Day in the City of Lakeland, commemorating this exceptional accomplishment and recognizing the hard work, teamwork, and dedication these great people have put into restoring their power. I wanted to just kind of show, it says, "You light up my life," and then they have the little, just the string for the electrical wires, and they made that for each person. It's really precious. So I want to, y'all come down, and we'll get a picture, three tonight. Okay. How long were y'all gone?
Not too bad, thanks.
Wow.
The guys clean up pretty good.
And speaking of hurricanes, the funding process for funding has begun for the hurricane Nate damages. You should see work on all of our wooden piers going into full swing beginning of January. And fortunately, we did not suffer like Lakeland and other Florida cities. To reach a broader audience, we are sending our bi-monthly calendar out with utility bills beginning February, March. Copies will still be available at City Hall, Public Works, Nick Center, the library, the museum, and the Welcome Center. We will no longer be taking utility payments over the phone. Customers may pay bills by coming to City Hall, mailing your payment, automatic bank draft, online using your credit card or debit card, or through their online banking services. The clubhouse at Quail Creek is at long last in the bid process. We anticipate having a contract for council approval at the January 22nd council meeting, and then renovation will begin. I'm very excited about that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item will be public participation pertaining to agenda items only. Keep in mind, Item 5 is a public hearing, so if you'd like to speak to Item 5, you'll have an opportunity when we get to that number of items. So if you want to speak to Items 6 through 18, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Ron Allen, 6612 Willow Bridge Drive, Fairhope, and I want to speak on behalf of the Entertainment District. I'm in favor of it. I heard the discussion during the workshop. I agree it should be for special items only, special events, and I would suggest between 5:00 and 8:00. Don't know what you do about arching grass because of the timing, but I'm fully in favor of it, and if it comes abusive, you can always change it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. I just had a couple of comments on Agenda Item 6 regarding the Central Business Entertainment District. It seemed to me that the issue could be uncoupled from the Central Business District and made a little more straightforward in its implementation and enforcement. It could be a matter of permitting, whether or not the ABC's enforcement of the open container laws, or whatever that is, could be made an item associated with the permit application for a special event and decoupled from the Central Business District. That way, this kind of a dispensation could be made available to event planners at other locations. And I imagine there may be other places in the city where such a thing may be a factor. For example, I haven't seen block parties outside the Central Business District, but such a thing might occur. There may be other locations for bars and restaurants outside the Central Business District. So it could be separated from being specific to the Central Business District. That may make it a lot easier to implement this thing. The other thing that occurred to me was that the ordinance indicates that the downtown Fairhope Business Association would be the downtown development entity. I'm not quite sure just what that means or what powers it gives to the downtown merchants. I don't know who the members are. I couldn't find any place where the members were identified or listed.
Let me address that real quick, Mr. Gover. To enact an entertainment district, one of the stipulations in the state statute says that we have to have incorporated a downtown development entity for the purpose of the district. It just says we have to have one. And so we are saying that the Downtown Fairhope Business Association, which we have been told by the State of Alabama, does qualify. That is our business development entity. It has to be in existence for us to be able to pass an entertainment district ordinance.
Okay.
That's what that is. It doesn't give them any powers over this.
If you uncoupled it from the Central Business District, that might change that consideration. Okay, thank you.
Let me address a couple of those as well. State statute gives the City of our designation the ability to have up to two entertainment districts, so if we were to consider another one somewhere in the future to perhaps encompass other bars and restaurants, we could do one other. Block parties, I don't believe, would fall under the jurisdiction of the ABC Board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I will close public participation pertaining to agenda items and open it up to council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. I wanted to thank Mudstar for assisting Santa in getting over to the elementary school the other day during the fire drill. We appreciate that, the kids do, I'm sure. And I just wanted to take a time to wish everybody safe and Merry Christmas, and that's all I've got.
Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, since we just met last week, all I really have is just to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and pray that God continues to bless Fairhope in 2018.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, a couple of committee updates, since we didn't get to that in the work session. Bike Ped was asked that when the piers go into repair, that they could be made ADA accessible, that that could be part of the scope of work. The EAC approved the recommendations that the principals submitted for the contribution from the City for next year. And the Financial Advisory Committee broke into two groups. Two individuals will be looking into the police jurisdiction, what the expense is, you know, based on the size, and then one is going to look into funding for capital projects for next year. And back to the MedStar, I live close to the football field, and I walked outside earlier that morning, I heard the helicopter, and I was like, "Oh, Lord, accident, said a little prayer." And then I found out it was picking up Santa Claus. I told Santa Claus, he said he appreciated the prayers anyway, so. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I believe, I have to check with Lisa, that there's a personnel board meeting Wednesday at 5:00. Isn't that what I read? Well, anyway, I believe it's the personnel board, not that anybody ever comes, but if you would like to come, it's going to be Wednesday at 5:00 up here at the Delchamps Room. They changed the regular time, 5:00 PM. And I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and to remember, have everyone remember that the reason for the season is Christ, and for everyone to keep Christ in their heart during the season. Thank you very much.
I have no comments during council comments tonight. We will move on to Item 5, which is a public hearing and a resolution approving the issuance and use of the bonds for the Nolan Health Services Incorporated to finance the purchase of Fairhope Health and Rehab located at 108 South Church Street. We have Mr. Brad Cherry here with the firm of Maynard Cooper and Gale. He will give a quick overview for those of you who might be wondering what this is all about. Just a bunch of legal mumbo jumbo in it, Mr. Cherry.
In a sense, yes, absolutely. Keeps me employed, though. What we've essentially got, Nolan, why I'm here, Nolan's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the federal government has given them the ability to take advantage of tax-exempt debt, much that the City of Fairhope can issue municipal bonds that are tax-exempt, so can a 501(c)(3). Part of that, however, is that the IRS requires us to go, if there's a project in a particular municipality, let that city know what we're doing and give them the ability to pass either approval or disapproval upon it. So that's one of the reasons we're here today, to do that, to check that box. The other reason is Nolan probably has 15 to 20 facilities across the state. They can use tax-exempt bonds, but they have to be issued by a governmental issuer, and the one they use is a special care authority. It was formed by the City of Pell City. The reason for that is that's the location of one of their facilities, but that entity has statewide jurisdiction under Alabama law. But as committee from one city's entity doing a project in another city, we also have to come to the City of Fairhope where this project will be located and get you all's permission. So what we're doing, we're not changing the nature of the facility. Facility will stay the same. Nolan intends to make some upgrades to it, some improvements with the parking, painting, some interior improvements, mechanical systems, things of that nature. But the biggest item is Nolan would seek to reimburse itself from tax-exempt bond proceeds. So those are kind of the two things that we are asking for. One thing importantly to know is it doesn't obligate the city at all financially. It's just checking the box for us to be able to do this financing. There's no obligation whatsoever on the City of Fairhope. These bonds are 100% the obligation of Nolan, so.
Council, this is pretty much exactly what we did for the bond issuance for the new Catholic High School.
It is, and they were, our firm, Maynard Cooper, over in Mobile handled that as well. They're a 501(c)(3). They have to also get the permission of a city where their project is located, so. By the way, we've already purchased the project, so we closed on the purchase October the 20th. Now we're just seeking to reimburse ourselves from bond proceeds.
Council, any questions for Mr. Cherry? Thank you, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you all.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing in regards to this bond issuance. I will now close the public hearing in regards to this bond issuance. I entertain a motion for this resolution to approve the issuance and use of the bonds for Nolan Health Services.
Submissed.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the issuance of the bonds. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, bond issuance is approved. Thank you. Okay, number six. This is an ordinance establishing an entertainment district for the City of Fairhope. Council, I will go through the edits made in the work session. Under Section 1, where it says, "Entertainment district with the areas and boundaries set forth and designated in Exhibit A," Exhibit A being concurrent with the Central Business Under Section 3, the last sentence, "Cup should be approved or purchased through the Fairhope Downtown Business Association." Strike that. Under Section 6, the Fairhope Entertainment District shall be in effect for First Friday Art Walk events, Mardi Gras parades, city-sponsored parades such as the Christmas Parade, and shall be in effect one hour before and one after, one hour after, these events. Can I leave anything out?
Should we put a provision in there in case somebody wanted to come to council to get permission? If there's something we're missing?
It's probably a good idea in case we left somebody out inadvertently.
And upon special request?
Right.
If that's allowed. That was the edits that I had. Did I miss any edits? If not, I will ask for someone to introduce the ordinance. I'll introduce ordinance. Okay. I would think it best, unless I hear from council, that you want to vote for immediate consideration, that this lay over until the next council meeting. I know we have New Year's Eve, and it would affect that, but I don't know if this is one of those that we want to rush, although there is a big event going on New Year's Eve. What's up with you, council?
Oh, yeah, add New Year's Eve to, yeah. I almost said city-sponsored events, but we don't want to do that, because a lot of city-sponsored events probably don't fall under that special events.
Given New Year's Eve is coming up, I'd be fine with suspending with the rules.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend with the rules then. Do I have a second?
I guess I'll second.
You'll second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend with the rules. Clerk, will you call out a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place 2. No.
All right. It has to be unanimous. This will lay over to the next meeting.
Fair enough.
All right. Moving on to Item 7. Item 7 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Film Festival for an appropriation of $8,000 to help bring sustained economic growth from the film ministry to the Alabama Gulf Coast through its Fairhope Film Festival. I will entertain a motion. Pass this resolution.
Submissed.
Say it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item 8 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program for an appropriation of $5,000 to support activities related to stormwater education and watershed management. Entertain a motion to approve this?
Submissed.
Say it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 9 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club for an appropriation of $50,000 to help manage and operate the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club facility. Entertain a motion.
Submissed.
Say it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And for the members of the public, of those that might be watching this live streaming, all of these resolutions have been passed in the budget, and this is kind of a final adoption of these. If you think we're moving through these pretty quickly, we are. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Thomas Hospital Foundation for an appropriation of $50,000 pledged to assist in the construction of the New Birth Center to include and enhance special care nursery. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
Submissed.
Say it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance for an appropriation of $15,000 to support economic development facilitation within the City of Fairhope. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
Submissed.
Say it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Committee for use of the city facilities, rental, and cleaning fees on Martin Luther King's birthday, which is January 15, 2018, including the streets and the parks, but they will be responsible for any incidentals, damages, or security if necessary. And I will also say that they did submit a certificate of liability insurance as required by the city. I will entertain a motion.
Submissed.
Say it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the execution of the contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Motion passes. Item 13 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope City Council hereby accepts the $35,000 gift to the City of Fairhope from the John Martins Family Foundation, and earmarks these funds for improvements at the Triangle property. I'm going to ask Councilman Brown and City Attorney Tuck Wynn to explain that further, if you may.
Yes, I was approached by John Martin and a few other individuals. Obviously, John Martin has a family foundation, and they were looking to get some money to the City of Fairhope, not knowing where the city was heading, but to preserve the Triangle property, and they needed to do it by the year end.
I don't really have anything to add to that. There may be some more structure to this in the future, but right now, it's fairly open.
Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you, Councilman Brown. Thank you, Tuck.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
If something were to happen in the future, and I'm not saying that it would, it would be a council approval, but if this was property that y'all deemed worthy selling to purchase other property that we want, how would that affect that donation? Would it, would we just get with that foundation and ask them if there was something else they wanted to?
Now, I understand the question, if we could just repeat it?
If we sold the Triangle property at some point in time, that this money is earmarked for, what would happen to that donation?
I think the donation is made to preserve and protect that property, maybe walking trails or something like that, but if the city ever decided to sell it to a third person, I think that that donation may have to be paid back to the donor, or with the donor's consent, whatever would be done would have to be done with the donor's consent.
When I say the Triangle property, I'm talking about the triangle. Is this for the property across the street from the Triangle?
Yes, it is.
Okay, maybe it would be rewarded?
We could be more specific, but I think that that Triangle property has commonly referred to all 108 of those acres.
Yeah, yes, that's the way I assumed it was 108 acres.
But if you want to, somebody to make the motion to approve that with the addition of the words earmark for these funds improvements at the Triangle property inclusive of the 108 acres known as the Triangle property, that would clarify it. I think that that's a simple enough change that we could say, make the motion to pass this resolution with the words, "Funds for improvements at the 108-acre Triangle property." I think it's 108 acres.
I think that's appropriate. It's appropriate to do that.
108, plus or minus, approximately 108 acres. Approximately 108 acres.
You got that, Lisa?
Somebody want to make that motion?
Submissed.
Say it.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution that the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2017, be extended through January 22, 2018, to allow the invoices and expenditures to continue as needed. Do I have a motion to pass this resolution?
Submissed.
Say it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hopefully, we'll get it passed before then. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 15 is a resolution, appointment of the city attorney. I'll read this resolution, and this is doing part to, City Attorney Tuck Wynn's retirement to be effective the end of this month. He announced this several months ago, and I've said this before, I'll say it again, the city is in debt to Mr. Wynn, who served the city for 30-something years in the capacity of a city attorney, and we appreciate everything that you've done, and just saying it in the council meeting is probably not adequate, but 30-something years of service as attorney and city prosecutor is much appreciated. Thank you, by your city.
Thank you.
Lisa's in charge of the party. Okay, this resolution states, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Marcus E. McDowell..." Alabama, that Marcus E. McDowell is hereby appointed as city attorney. The term of the city attorney shall serve until the next general municipal election nor until a successor is elected by the council and qualified. Be it further resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, and Mayor Karen Wilson is authorized to sign an engagement letter between the City of Fairhope and Marcus E. McDowell for legal services." I will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Say it.
I have a motion and a second. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes, thank you, counsel, and congratulations, Mr. McDowell, who's in the audience, appreciates your service to the city for many years now. Item 16 are appointments to the Education Advisory Committee, which would be for three-year terms, the appointments of Ken Cole and Colby Cooper. Is there any reason to break these up into separate nominations, or you're gonna nominate them both?
Nominate both.
Okay, you got a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate both of them.
Okay, there's a motion to nominate.
Second.
Mr. Cole and Mr. Cooper, also been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 17 is appointment to the Historic Preservation Committee. That's a three-year commitment, and the appointment, nomination is for Mr. Cooper Norman. And counsel, if you didn't read that resume, I would encourage you to read that, because that is an impressive resume right there. And that's no joke. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Cooper Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, appointment is approved. Item 18 is a request of Katja, did I pronounce that correctly?
Katja.
Katja, okay. Palumbo of the Fairhope K6 Parent Teacher Corporation requesting permission to close the streets in downtown Fairhope on Saturday, January 27th, 2018, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the 5K run and 1-mile fun run. This is also known as the Pirate Dash to raise money for the educational needs of the Fairhope Elementary and Fairhope Intermediate Schools. Chief, do you know of any reason we should deny this request?
No, there ain't any more.
Okay, all right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 19, public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I'll close public participation, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned, thanks, counsel.